Okay, so I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Prince William County School Board and Prince William County Board of County Supervisors to order. The purpose of the joint meeting between the Prince William County School Board and the Board of County Supervisors is to discuss the first quarter general revenue update and outlook, to receive an implicit bias presentation, to receive a presentation on the Smart Beginnings pre-K program. Due to medical conditions related to pandemic that prevent their physical attendance, school board members Lily Jesse, Adele Jackson, Diane Ralston are participating in this meeting through electronic means as permitted by Virginia Code 2.23708.2A, 1A, and 2, and the School Board Policy 139. School Board member participation in meetings by electronic means. There will be no citizen comment time this evening. At this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Martino for the budget outlook and presentation.
Thank you, Chair Latif. We have our Director of Finance, Michelle Autry, at the podium there. She's going to be presenting the material.
Hi, good evening. Michelle Autry, I'm the County's Director of Finance. Next slide, please. I am here tonight to present to you the FY '21 First Quarter Revenue Update and Outlook. Our Principals of Sound Financial Management require us to report to the Board 45 days after the end of each quarter on our revenues, our general revenues. And those are the revenues that we share with the schools in accordance with the revenue sharing agreement. We have a formal process for updating our revenues and projecting the revenues, and it's through a revenue committee. And a member of the school staff sits on that committee with us. John Wallingford is typically present, as is the School Director of Finance. We also have a number of folks throughout the county and subject matter experts, which I'll cover on the next slide. But some of the things that we do each year is we look at all the trends. We look nationally, we look at the state, we look regionally, and we look at our local trends. We also rely on those subject matter experts that I spoke of. Those are people like our Development Services Director, Economic Development Planning, our industry, like real estate brokers, commercial brokers, et cetera. All of our projections are data-driven, and they're typically very conservative. We don't want to miss our revenues. Obviously, shortfalls can be painful, so we do use conservative assumptions. And you'll see there on this chart our trends over the last 10 years. We have been within 98% to 99% accuracy in all years. And this really, then, this revenue projection then allows the boards to set the tax policy each year during the budget process. The process kicks off in the fall, and so we're in the revenue committee process right now. It continues typically through mid-January, and we have been projected revenues to present to the county executive for his proposed budget, to present to the Board of County Supervisors. Next slide, please. This next slide shows some of our revenue forecast, our revenue forecast members. You'll see here this year we brought in, for example, John Lehman. He's the Chief Economist for the Virginia Department of Taxation. He comes in every year and speaks to us. We bring in a member of the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond, who speaks about the economy, a member from the Virginia Realtor Association, the local builder industry, real estate brokers, typically try to get somebody from NADA, the National Automotive Dealers Association, and then retailers as well, as along with county staff that's shown there on the right. Next slide, please. Just to remind you, this is the FY '21 adopted general revenues, just over $1.1 billion. These are the revenues that are shared with the schools after we take out the recreation tax, which goes directly for transportation. And you'll see that the two largest sources are real estate tax and personal property, comprising about 85% of our taxes. The next largest source is our sales tax, which is about 5.9%. Next slide, please. These are economic indicators, different things that we look at to measure how the economy is doing. We used to compare this with the prior year of the same time, like, so September to September, but since the pandemic, we have gone to comparing it to the prior quarter because it's just more relevant. And you'll see we have a sliding scale here in the middle. Gray means we're neutral. So the trends haven't changed from last quarter enough to make us feel like we want to put it in the green. Although you'll see, for example, the unemployment rate in Virginia, it has gone from 8.1% to 6.2%. While that's positive and would be a green trend, we don't feel that, given that the COVID pandemic is still here, there are still people unemployed, that it's enough to warrant a positive outlook. We're really kind of neutral at this point. And so this slide is really a number of indicators from across both Virginia and Prince William County, and you'll see that we're pretty neutral in all of them. Next slide, please. This one looks at the local real estate market. The local real estate market on the residential side is very strong right now. We are seeing houses on the market less than 15 days in many cases. We're seeing anywhere from 6% to 10% appreciation. So that's good news for the taxes, tax base for this next year, because the activity of this year is what forms the January 1 assessed values. However, on commercial, some of the impacts are yet to be seen. And so we have a feeling that commercial won't be as strong as residential. Certain sectors are doing very well. For example, while you might think retail is not doing well, our sales tax is very strong right now. There's a couple theories for that. Some of it is people are working at home, so maybe they're doing their shopping in Prince William, where they used to perhaps shop in Fairfax or DC or near their place of employment. At the state level, they're also still seeing very strong sales tax. So you'll see here on this chart, from June, for example, in the state, it was 5.4% and now 7.5%. And in the county, we were at 4.1%, now 9.1%. So a very strong sales tax base. The other area on here is building permits. The activity is still relatively neutral compared to last year, not a whole lot more building activity than we had in the prior year, so we're keeping that in the gray. Next slide, please. This slide shows the adopted general revenue forecast after recreation is taken out. And you'll see we are updating it negatively $3.5 million. And it's primarily in two areas: investment income, and that's because interest rates are very low. We also were very proactive in keeping a very strong liquidity level so that the Board of County Supervisors were able to move the tax due dates to help our community as much as possible. The other areas is in bank franchise fees across the nation. Savings rates are on the decline. And so those two areas, we've made an adjustment downward. The good news is the sales tax is still very strong, and so we're watching it very carefully. And perhaps next quarter, we may do a positive adjustment to sales tax that will offset some of that. But for now, we decided it was too early to really make that call. The next slide shows the shortfall. If the shortfall remains through year-end, $3.5 million, that shortfall gets shared in accordance with the revenue share agreement. So it would be a $1.5 million shortfall to the county, and then $2 million to the state. And this is, of course, before all of our fund balances, our required contribution to the unassigned fund balance is funded at 7.5%. Next slide, please. I think we're maybe off on there. Go to Slide 9, please. On CARES Act, I want to talk a little bit about some of the other funding sources that you've had this year that have helped with revenues, both on the county and the school side. The county was the recipient of $82.1 million of coronavirus relief funds. And approximately 1/3 of that we provided to the schools. $20 million was provided initially to support the purchase of computer devices to support distant learning. Another $5 million was then provided for further computer equipment or PPE. And then $3.2 million was provided for audiovisual equipment. So in total, about 20, what is that, 25, $28 million? Next slide, please. Slide 10. The Joint COVID Task Force was also established, and did a couple of initiatives here shown on this slide. The first was there was state funding that was secured for hotspots, and I'm going to go through some of these in a little more detail over the next two slides. There was also efforts towards a network capacity expansion, technology upgrades, library hotspots for students to connect to Wi-Fi, EOC warehouse support. So this is our Emergency Operations Center. We were able to secure PPE for the schools. And then finally, a four-way child care agreement with Alphabet in the county and the schools, and then also through the Boys and Girls Club. And up to $2 million was provided for school care. Next slide, please. On the libraries, a couple things they did was that improved Wi-Fi access through the library parking. They've also partnered with various schools to supply library cards and digital library card access for families to support virtual learning, and then virtual learning to support the school STEM and STEAM activities. Slide 12. The Department of Information Technology secured that hotspot grant, so a little over 4,000 hotspots were provided for $1.2 million with the additional CARES Act fund. In addition, they secured 100 Chromebooks through the libraries to support schools. They also provided access to the Amazon Web Services Contract Center for schools free of charge. And then our position in Iron Mountain, the data center, the schools also joined into that data center, and we were able to leverage joint technology there as well. On the uncertainty slides today, like I said, the commercial real estate market is still very unclear. It's much more clear on residential. We think it's going to be strong through the remainder of the year. There frankly is just not enough inventory on the market, so that's what's keeping that residential market very strong. Sales tax continues to be strong, but we know certain sectors of commercial will likely have reduced gross receipts, which will impact our B-Pole tax revenue, our business and professional occupational license. And finally, interest income will continue to remain hampered. We also know there's going to be future budget stresses this year. As we continue to respond to this pandemic and CARES Act funding dries up, we're going to have to still continue with some of these economic recovery efforts, community feeding efforts, for example, homeless services, testing, and that will likely move into vaccinations. And then some of the ongoing costs is this PPE, enhanced cleanings, the increased technology uses to support laptops, virtual learning, virtual meetings, and remote access. So all of those things will continue to be budget pressures that we'll have to watch over the next year. Any questions, please?
I had a quick one.
Sure.
And this might require Mr. Wallingford to help answer, too, just because I think it's important for all of us. When we talked about the budget for this school year, we talked about the State General Assembly holding schools, they use the word harmless for enrollment. So schools get allocated monies based on our enrollment. So our enrollment's down 3.5%, and I think it's about $15 million that the General Assembly has not funded us yet. We don't have those monies. And so, Mr. Wallingford, can you speak to that real quick about how much money that is, what the enrollment drop is, and what we, if you guys have made any projections or anticipated concerns about that, how that'll affect us for the rest of the year? Because that will also be a stress to you as well.
So, thank you, Dr. Latif. I'm going to give you round numbers just for the sake of the conversation here. We forecast about 92,000 students in this current year, the current budget year. We ended up having about 89,000 students, or a reduction of about 3,000 students. The per pupil amount that we receive from the state is approximately, it's little over 5,000, about $5,200. That loss because of enrollment reductions from our forecast is about $15 million to $16 million. The General Assembly has been having conversations about holding us harmless on that. In other words, they would provide us revenue to the extent of what their forecasts were for our enrollment in the current year. We're waiting for the January session to take place to see whether or not that hold harmless actually comes to fruition.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wallingford. And then, on that, do you anticipate, or are there any thoughts on projections for next year's enrollment?
Well, like Ms. Autry just said, we've just begun our revenue forecasting process. We will find out from the state in December to January timeframe what we think next year's revenues will be from a state perspective. Michelle, I expect we'll be getting right before the holidays, like we typically do in late December, and that's when we'll actually begin to take a look at what the impacts are on the budget.
And so we have, just because we haven't been held harmless technically yet, we have made adjustments to staffing across the division because of the drops in enrollment moving students from school, moving positions from schools that might be under-enrolled.
Sure. So there's a process that the school division goes through every year. We reconciled student enrollment on September 30. We put out our budget in May, and the following September, we count the students who actually come across the doors, across the threshold, and make adjustments. And across 100 schools in the division, some will see more students than were forecast, some will see fewer students than forecast, and this adjustment process takes place. We encourage our principals to start making those adjustments early in July and August, or at least planning for what adjustments might take place. This year was a significant year. In my 27 years here, this is the biggest enrollment reduction from the prior year forecast that we've had. And so it did create a little stress on schools, and they're scrambling a bit to make things work right now.
Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Canlin.
Thank you. There were a few slides that I was missing from my slide deck. If we could just get those at some point, that would be great.
Yeah, Michelle, I'm not sure if you noticed that, but there's a different slide deck was up on the screen, so if you can share those.
Yep, we'll send it.
Hi, Lily Jesse. I just wanted to look at Slide 8 again, just an explanation. I think you used the word state instead of school. Slide 8.
Yeah, I think Ms. Autry, you said on the, that was a slide talking about the revenue shortfall, and at the end of the year, we would divide that up. And I think language-wise, you had said $2 million for the state. I think you meant to say $2 million for the school.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that the slide? Ms. Jesse, is that the correct slide you wanted?
Yeah, that's the slide that I wanted.
Right.
And I also want to ask Mr. Wallingford, when we look at the school revenue based on the September 30 enrollment, has there been some increase in our funding, or not funding, but budget based on our lack of use of buses and not lack of use of students in building? Has there been some way to compensate for that lost in enrollment? Does that question make sense?
Mrs. Jesse, I'm not sure I understand the question. Here's what I'd say. We haven't made any, centrally, we haven't made any adjustments to the transportation budget or to school budgets, with the one exception that I mentioned, and that's the change in enrollment between the budget adopted in late April, early May, and what we actually counted on September 30.
I guess I'm asking, are there any early savings with the usual, you know, usually we have schools, students in school, and we have buses, and we have use of facilities and cars for facilities. Are you seeing any savings in those areas?
So I understand your question, Mrs. Jesse. As you're aware, you've been around the school division for a couple of years and a principal for many years. 95% of the budget in a school goes to salaries, and we've not furloughed or even talked about furloughing or making any staffing adjustments from that perspective. So the expenditures that you would normally see in a school, those are pretty much intact. Now, there are some operational savings for items like materials and supplies because people aren't in the buildings, but we're, as you're aware, we're beginning to bring students into the buildings, and so we'll see those expenses start to accrue again.
Thank you.
If I may, the one thing I would add, too, like the schools experiencing a revenue shortfall with your state revenues, perhaps, the county, too, with our agency revenues, that's an area that's not shared with the schools. Those are specific revenues for specific programs, but we are projecting a $10 million agency shortfall. Those are primarily due to programs such as our parks and recs. If you think about our chin centers, our DLT rec centers, they're not at full capacity, our sports leagues, all of our fields, those type of things. So we are looking at a shortfall there. We are looking to cover that with expenditure savings through the year, projecting about a 2% expenditure savings, and that will be about break even. And so that does not put us in a position right now, projected, to fund all of our reserves. And so we are closely watching revenues and expenditures and all of these things, and may have to make adjustments as the year goes on.
I guess my final question is, I'm not sure of the slide, but you talked about $2 million in after-school care, how you support it. Could you explain that a little bit more? Thank you.
Sure. So there was CARES Act funding that went towards childcare initiatives, and so funding went to the Alphabet program, which I believe Alphabet is a contractor the schools currently use for after-school care. And so additional funding was provided so that they could increase their capacity and have childcare services for families, and I think maybe even at reduced cost or scholarships, perhaps.
Was that $2 million I did not miss? Did you say $2 million?
$2 million, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lawson, Supervisor.
Thanks. Michelle, do we know the performance of that Alphabet scholarship program? Do we know if that's been completely allocated, or does anybody here know what the status of that is? Because the funds have to be spent by the end of the year, correct?
Michelle Cassiato, we allocated $2 million to the program, but it is a reimbursement piece, so Alphabet submits receipts and then receives funding. We did an upfront payment of half a million dollars to get them started, and they've been submitting receipts against that. As of the first week of December, I think we had expended roughly $600,000. They do not expect that they will be using the full allocation before December 30, which is the deadline date because it is CARES Act funding.
Madam Chair, thank you. Can families resubmit? If it's not being utilized, you know, we want to use up as much as possible to give families relief. So do you know if there's an opportunity for families? I don't know all the details of that program, but if there's money left, you know, there's capacity in that grant program, are we allowing people to go back in for a second dip?
In essence, everybody who is in the program right now with Alphabet is there as a 100% scholarship student, so they are accommodating everybody that they can accommodate in terms of demand and as well as supply. So they have opened some additional sites. They have had some success in staffing up, but it has been a challenge for them as well. And as the schools have continued to reopen and bring back a grade or two, that has limited the amount of use that Alphabet can have in some of those schools. So it's been a little bit of a balancing act, and I believe that they are doing their absolute best to accommodate as many people as they can. But just logistically and with the count and understanding when the school calendar ends, we are expecting that they will not be able to use the full allocation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The information about the $82.1 million in CARES money, I'm curious. I know maybe there will be more CARES money coming. Do we factor in any revenue forecast? I don't know if it's a revenue forecast, but money coming through additional CARES funding, and how would that impact?
So right now, we aren't forecasting additional funding, although there is talk that there could be another round of funding that may come sometime after the first of the year. There's also talks that that CARES Act funding deadline could be extended beyond December 30. That has not happened yet, so it's something we're watching carefully, but we are not planning on now that those dollars would be in hand until we're certain.
Thank you very much, Ms. Autry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and thank you, guys. And thank you, Supervisor Lawson, for bringing up that program. Excellent program, and the county had moved exceptionally quickly to put that out there. And Ms. Cassiato, that's fantastic news that we have 100% supply and 100% demand all met. That's incredible. Congratulations and good work on that. Thank you, Dr. Wallace, and the school division for doing all of that as well. Our next presentation will be on implicit bias presentation by Maria Burgos. She's our Supervisor of Global Learning and Cultural Response of Instruction. Ms.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Mr. Canlin.
And I'm not sure if I say Mr. Chairman or Madam Chair. Are you running the meeting, Mr. Chairman? Or, well, okay, Mr. Chairman and Madam Chair. I guess I was surprised to see this on the agenda. I know I had asked about this at the last board meeting. It was basically, the last combined meeting was basically shot down on getting any additional information. I'm wondering, just as a start, what is the purpose behind this presentation? Is this an informational briefing on what you're training teachers on? Is this an informational briefing on what you're training students on? What is this presentation, and why is it part of our joint school board meeting?
A number of members on my board, and I know, I think Ms. Franklin had asked for just some thoughts on what we do just for cultural bias training within the school division. So Ms. Maria Burgos will talk about that as well. And Ms. Williams.
Sorry. The purpose really, because it's my request, so I just want to answer you directly, is we're all elected leaders in a majority county, so I thought it would be very wise of us to learn about implicit bias. The state of Virginia and the school division has taken a stance, a very progressive stance in following anti-racism policy training. And I had asked, I want to say probably about November of last year, for us to have a joint board meeting and this to be included so that we could better serve our constituents and better be informed of our own biases. So this evening's presentation is not to say what we do specifically in the school division, because we have our own equity committee. We're coming out later on in this year 2020 with some more information regarding that, but really to help us better understand how we should be looking at things, how our own biases affect our own judgments, and for an educational purpose, that's really where it comes from.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Canlin.
Well, I don't think this is an appropriate venue, and frankly, school board member, Vice Chair, sorry, Vice Chair Williams, I don't think it's your place to tell the Board of County Supervisors what sort of training we need on, have you seen evidence that you think that this implicit bias is a problem on the Board of County Supervisors? I didn't agree to this kind of training. We were not informed that we were going to come here and be trained on any implicit bias that you seem to think that the members of the Board of County Supervisor have. I think this is frankly highly insulting, because you're insinuating that somehow members of the Board of County Supervisors hold these implicit biases against different racial groups. And I don't think this is an appropriate, if the Board of County Supervisors wants training on implicit bias, then we will decide as Board of County Supervisors how to train ourselves, but to have the school board come and say to the Board of County Supervisors, "We're going to train you on implicit bias." Your own implicit bias, I think, is highly offensive and inappropriate. The fact that we're talking about this, when we've got a global pandemic happening, when we've got kids who are floundering at home, when we're trying to figure out how we're going to fund schools for next year, we're taking time during a joint meeting to talk about this? I find this very disturbing, and I object to this type of training in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Canlin. Your objection is noted, but implicit bias is something that every human being walking the earth has, and that was pretty much the point of this, is just to infer information so that we're all aware that everybody has this. It's not specific to you personally or to your board. It's just good leadership, and it's fine if you object. That's no problem. We're all allowed to have our own opinions and perspectives, and I respectfully disagree with you, and I thank you so much for sharing.
I would like to add, Lily Jesse. This slides, I looked at the slides this afternoon, and I'd like to say that the school board has not seen these slides. So I think it's not about the Board of Supervisors. I think it's about all of us as community leaders and as elected officials. Perhaps it came from Ms. Williams, from the school board, but we're all in this field of dealing with our populations, and it is something that we all need to be aware. It's an awareness. When I looked at the slides today, I learned a lot, and I think all of us will learn a lot tonight, but it's not something that, I want to make sure you understood that, this is not something where the school board has been trained on, seen these slides and been trained on it, and now we're saying, "You need to have it." We're both receiving this training at the same time. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Lawson.
Thank you. Supervisor Canlin, thank you for bringing this up, because I wholeheartedly agree with you. Matter of fact, I don't know if the school board members that are new, or the Board of County Supervisors members that are new, are aware that on January 9, 2017, Ms. Williams and Ms. Jesse with with then-chairman Ryan Sawyer, sent a letter to the Department of Justice because our boards collaborate, work in a collaborative manner for $20 million of school construction funding, $10 million for the 13th high school to add 500 seats because we, for the last several years, have had very overcrowded high schools in the west end of the county. And in the east end, it has been the elementary schools in more recent years. And we worked in a very bipartisan manner to find the funding. Supervisor Cannon and Supervisor Frank Princeby worked together, and they were the spearheads of it. But the vote was a very bipartisan vote. It came with a lot of drama from the chairman and Ms. Williams and Ms. Jesse. And then when they lost, they followed up with a Department of Justice complaint about Supervisor Cannon, myself, and other members of the then-boards. So frankly, Ms. Williams, I have a hard time taking you serious that you truly want to work together with people that don't look like you or think politically like you when you file a DOJ complaint about me because of a vote that I took and I proudly stand by to help our students. So I'm not going to sit in a training session. I agree with Supervisor Cannon. I find it offensive that during this historic pandemic, when we've got families and teachers and everybody in the School Division that are doing everything they can to survive this, that you find this a priority when our boards maybe meet twice a year. So I'll object. Matter of fact, I'm going to pack up and leave because I'm offended that you find that I need to be trained and that this is also a priority to you when you're the one on record. Ms. Lawson, enough, please.
No, no, ma'am, it's not enough. She's, she's, it's not enough. She's the one that's trying to shove this down our throats. It's not enough.
You have gone on too long.
No, I haven't, Anne.
Madam Chair, absolutely, no.
No, you can't have, if you agree to this, first of all, on Sunday, no. We couldn't even get the presentation, so I had time to look at it. On Sunday night, I went to, I went to look for it, and it wasn't available for dispatch.
We are going through a difficult time in our society where I am, I'm like, if I have any implicit.
You're not, no.
You've taken this way, way off the form.
This is all about critical race theory, anti-Americanism, and I am going to object to it, and I'm leaving.
You are somehow thinking that this is a politically motivated thing. This is about, you're wrong. Supervisor Lawson, you are so.
This letter, because of 500 votes, I'm not going to sit here when she filed a complaint with the DOJ because we increased funding for the high school and then $10 million. It was like giving away cancer to her. She wouldn't take it for $10 million. So I can't take her seriously. She's the one that does it. Ms. Lawson, that was in 2017, and we've worked together very successfully since this time. Both boards have had several 8-0 votes since that time. I'm sorry you're going to miss out on an informational, not training session, but I'm sure your constituents, who you represent, which is a diverse population, would love to know that you, you're not interested in being open-minded to sit.
I just remembered, Justin was another vote. So the complaint was about Mr. Walker.
Making this political instead of just an educational experience. I appreciate your thoughts.
One sec, just real quick. The agenda was noted and posted a week ago. I received no email from either you, Mr. Cannon, or you, Ms. Lawson, regarding your objection to this item on the agenda. Now, I recognize and hear your objection duly noted. We recognize that. This is a presentation that is not to insult anyone. This is a new board. I don't answer for what happened in 2017, and I don't think Madam Chair Wheeler does as well. At this point, we'd like to go ahead and move forward with the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I just have two questions.
But let me duly note for the public, I was not, my email's readily available. No one reached out to me to object to this.
Mr. Chairman, I will address that. It's common courtesy to put supporting information on the topics that we're going to provide. We, as the Board of County Supervisors, you had our revenue projection report in here. It's common courtesy, but I did want to, you can shake your head. It doesn't make it not true. But I did want to ask, did the School Boards spend any money, taxpayer money, on this training, this material?
We have a whole office dedicated to this effort.
So the answer is yes. And then I guess my second question is, is this being taught to our children in our schools? Because I know about this, and I find this highly offensive. And if this is being taught to our children in our school district, I think the parents of Prince William County need to know that. So I would ask you, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Chairman, is this being taught to our kids in Prince William County schools?
Let's go through the presentation.
Is that a non-answer? Are you just refusing to answer me, or you don't want to answer?
We do cultural bias training.
To the kids.
Our division leaders and our teachers and everyone in the division.
And are they instructed to teach us to the children?
Now, Dr. Wallace, do you want to answer that question?
I'll refer that to Ms. Goss, Associate Superintendent, who supervises professional learning.
So good evening. This specific training that you're seeing here, this is a, this training that Mrs. Burgos and Mrs. Taylor and Dr. Williams, this is for our professional educators in the School Division. And it's an opportunity to foster, like the title says, inclusivity and equity. This exact training is not provided to students, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
And just for clarification, we did not receive the slides on the revenue projecting in the materials as well. So, you know, there's a little bit of that back and forth, okay? So I will move forward with the presentation. Ms. Lawson, if you want to say something, and then.
So on Sunday night, when I was doing my homework for Tuesday's board meetings, I noticed that the dispatch did not have the material for your present, your two items tonight. I don't know why your board didn't receive the material for the revenue presentation, because it was dispersed to us. Maybe Mr. Martino can answer that.
That's on me then. So we'll make sure that the next time we ever have a meeting like this, we'll make sure the materials get back and forth.
Okay. But I emailed our board clerk this morning to see if it had, if your two items had been disseminated and your staff had not even sent it to her. She had to go to your website to look for it. And then, and that was at 11 o'clock.
So that's on me. I'll make sure that doesn't happen again.
In all fairness, I mean, we had a 2:00 work session with a lot of other things going on. So I didn't even have proper time. I would have certainly reached out to you had I known exactly what this presentation was going to be a few days ago, but I didn't have the opportunity because I didn't know it wasn't posted. But I spent some time out in the parking lot looking through it, and I have serious problems about it, specifically all the critical race theory that is embedded through it. And I'm not going to sit here and be, and you've even, even Ms. Goss used the word "trained," that it's training for the Board of County Supervisors. If we, if we think, if I think that Supervisor Bodie and I have unconscious bias, then that's up to him and I to get our own training or work through it. I don't need the School Board to tell our board how we need to be trained any more than I have plans to train you guys on table manners. It's just, it doesn't work that way. If you don't want to participate, you're welcome to leave. We need to move on. I am, you know, whatever's going on here, I'm like, you're welcome to leave.
I'm going to.
Well, hopefully that you'll come back for the smart beginnings greater Prince William. You can go sit out in the hallway if you want. That's fine. Just leave and let us get on with the.
Mr. Chairman.
It's very.
But I do have the Department of Justice letter for anyone who wants a copy of it.
It has nothing to do with this.
Yeah, yeah. When the member who brought it accused me of racial discrimination over something, over 500 seats, are you kidding me? It has a lot to do with it, Anne. It tells me a lot about her.
You know, they're going through this training also. It's not like they're trying.
So it is training. It is training.
Information, training. You know, I'm open-minded.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Please leave.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair.
Mr. Angry, right.
Let me go on record as saying, you know, my family reminds me daily of my unconscious biases. I have no problem sitting in this seminar, workshop, training, whatever you want to call it, and participate. So I thank you all for putting this together. All right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'd just like to apologize for our board members who I consider were rude. Supervisor Franklin.
Just out of clarity, I thought they cared about equity.
Yeah, I thought so too. I just wanted clarification.
It's also about inclusivity as well.
Okay, Ms. Burgos.
Supervisor Bailey.
Oh, right.
Sorry, Dr. Latif, please excuse me. Just want to say to you as the School Board Representative and Vice Chair for this august group, thank you for having the foresight, progressive thought, that you might want to share this information with us. I don't, I don't see this as an insult at all, and I don't see this as training, but an opportunity to grow and to build relationships within these two boards, to build more relationships to serve our children, to equip us with things that we might be blindsided by. So I apologize to you for anything that may have been. It didn't seem like it was offensive to you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bodie.
Thank you. And I'm just saying this because my name was brought up by another supervisor. I welcome the opportunity to share a leadership opportunity to learn because we are, as elected leaders, have the most diverse community in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia with a make budgetary decisions, operational decisions, staff decisions, every single year on this. And if we have blind spots in this not serving certain segments of our community because of our own biases, I would welcome the opportunity to at least be aware of them so I'm a better leader. So I wanted to thank you for putting this on.
One quick thing, I'm sorry. The only thing, the other thing that I wanted to add is we're all learning how to disseminate information. We're all learning how to conduct specific meetings. So please, and please, just get the information to us as soon as you can. We understand that COVID has hit, and everything is not in a rhythm as it was before. So if you could, please, we'd appreciate it.
That's on me, thank you.
I'll turn it back to you.
Ms. Burgos, please take it.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy Dugan-Taylor, and I am the Director of the Office of Professional Learning. And tonight, we were asked to provide a short information on raising awareness of unconscious bias to foster inclusivity and equity. I would like to welcome Ms. Maria Burgos, Supervisor of Global Learning and Culturally Responsive Instruction. Next slide, please. Also, I am pleased to introduce Dr. Lisa Williams, a National Consultant on the Topics of Equity and Access on Public Education, who have been working with us since March 2020. So Maria, I'd like to invite you to begin the presentation.
Please unmute, Ms. Burgos.
Chrissy says that every time I'm on mute and speak, that I owe her a quarter. So I told her by now she can buy herself a car. Thank you, Chrissy, for the introduction. I work in the Office of Professional Learning, and this is informative for tonight, not training, as training requires dialogue from all participants. Our county is comprised of 104 different ethnicities and 122 different languages. We're a diverse county and growing. I am a social thinker who leads the work with equity and inclusion through a lens of love and accountability for myself and for those who I have the privilege to engage with and collaborate with, such as tonight. So thank you for the invitation. Implicit biases is also a guest tonight in the room, and is sitting quietly among us, making positive connection, making neutral connections, and maybe making negative assumptions about who we are and our intentions. This is why it's so vital to raise awareness of unconscious bias to foster inclusivity and equity as leaders. We owe it to ourselves and those we serve to reduce our implicit associations, to promote equity and inclusivity. Next slide. Unconscious bias is a positive step for any organization who wants to recognize and address these hidden biases that can influence workplace decisions and climates. And as leaders, it's a must-do. These are the four areas that we're going to touch on today. The first one is defining implicit bias. The second one is examining the relationship between implicit bias and the dimensions of who we are, our own culture, and what we bring to the workplace environment. The next is a review of how biases influences our decisions and interactions on a daily basis as human beings. And finally, just a few little strategies to consider as we wrap up the evening on this particular presentation. Next slide, please. Implicit bias refers to the unconscious thinking structures that influence our perceptions and behaviors and actions towards a person, a group, or any given situation. It's part of our safety mechanisms in the brain that's constantly scanning to say, are we safe or not? Learning about implicit biases should include information about the neuroscience of bias within the context of also examining those historical racial structures that give rise to and perpetuates inequities in learning institutions and organizations today. Next bullet. Implicit bias is not the same as explicit bias, where a person is aware of their actions on a conscious level. Implicit bias can be both neutral, as I said earlier, positive or negative. In most cases, people who generally care about fairness and equity will hold these unconscious biases that could lead them to react in ways that is very opposite from their held beliefs and values. Next bullet. Implicit bias is one of the critical factors that promote inequality resulting in unsafe and underproductive working environments. Implicit bias and its effects plays out in three key processes within the brain, that is priming, association, and assumptions that we'll look at in just a minute. Next slide. The first is priming, and this is a psychological phenomena in which words, image, sound, and any other stimulus is used to elicit associated responses and influence our decisions. For example, advertisers know this and use it to their advantage as they use priming to influence sales. Here's a prime example, a call for action from Nike. Restaurants may also use it to influence consumption. Next slide. Associations work hand in hand with priming and our decisions of culture. We have an innate inability to associate, we have an innate ability to associate two things together very quickly because we have these systems in the brains that create shortcuts. For example, what you're seeing above is an example of how we will quickly associate is raining cats and dogs per se, click. The next one that is a common association is a word like spick and span. And the last one, which you'll see coming down in the next click, is peanut butter and jelly. But based on your experience, you might say peanut butter and allergies. Think about priming again and consider who we often see as nurses, engineers, landscaping yards, being sent out of classrooms or jailed. The more often that we see two things together, the stronger the associations. Brain cells, as we know, when they fire together, they wire together. This is the highway of how unexampled assumptions uphold inequity. Click, please. When it comes to people, how we have primed to make associations is influenced by ads, books, social media, policies, and practice that have been applied throughout our history to include and exclude groups of people. Our brain's familiarity with diverse people and social settings influence our associations. Next slide. For example, I purposely put this picture for you because I know that your brain would be scanning and looking for an association of what is this right in front of me? Your brain does the same thing all day, every day because it's constantly scanning for safety and making those association. If you're familiar with this fruit, you know it smells fantastic, but you can't even eat it. So in often many places, it's used to fragrance a room. It's called a Buddha plant. Next slide. While there are many examples throughout history, these are a few examples of historical priming, associations, and assumptions expressed in defining humans. Click. One example includes a research publication of Carl Leianis, who published his Stamanatrag in 1758. His research focused on defining and categorizing humans into four categories. Leianis believed people were born with these traits. Click, please. As you review these categories, note that his. As you review these categories, note that his categorizations and other published works throughout histories are examples of stereotypes that still impact explicit and implicit social biases today. Earlier, I provided an example of who I am and touched upon internal, external, and organization dimensions of who I am. Actually, I left out the fact that I'm a Latino woman, so that would have been part of my internal influence. When people are asked to define their culture, most folks will express traits within that green area, what we call the internal dimension, and also their physical features. This model is visual of, it's a visual of how complex we experience and interpret life as individuals. This is our individual culture, influence our workplace productivity, our decision, our climate, our leadership, and more. Our unconscious mind makes up 90% of our decisions without, with our own awareness, and is wired to make cognitive shortcuts using the mentions of our individual culture to make associations and assumptions. Next slide. That is why the National Equity Project and many organizations say that as leaders for equity, we have to examine and unpack and mitigate our own biases and dismantle the policies and structures that hold inequity in place. We call this leading from the inside out. Everyone has biases, as we said before, but this is the cumulative impact of racism and other isms that exist in society. When these associative bias assumptions are expressed, we must examine how it is getting built into organizational practices, policies, and culture. Setting organizational goals to become equity-minded and to building equity. When we commit to intentionally noticing how our own lived experience have been shaped, have shaped our beliefs, our attitudes, and action, and make a commitment to address and dismantle racism and other forms of systemic oppression, we can begin the work of reducing the negative cumulative effects of emotional states of mind and physiological responses experienced historically today by blacks, indigenous, and people of color. Health institutes like Centerra have called implicit bias a detriment to health and have labeled this cycle racial battle fatigue. The following are just a few examples of social and behavioral biases present in day-to-day living as professionals and members of our community. Next slide. First impressions are lasting impressions. Have you heard that before? Well, the thing about it is that researchers will tell you that it takes about 18 intentional interactions to change that first impression. If that first impression wasn't good, negative bias plays a role in that. It's a survival instinct that we all have. It is known as the positive and negative asymmetry that refers to our tendency to focus on learn from and use negative information far more than positive information. What research says is that we remember traumatic experiences better than positive ones, that we recall insults better than praise, that we think about negative things more frequently than positive ones. According to the Journal of Psychological Science, our subconscious mind processes around a million pieces of information per second, while our conscious mind processes around 40 pieces of information per second. Reflect, as you will, the last time that you looked at data, where did your attention draw to? Did you look at all the growth areas and positives, or did you queue in on those areas that need to continue to grow? When you were given a picture the last time of a family photo where everyone was smiling, did you queue in on that one person in the corner who didn't want to smile? Clearly not smiling. Next slide, please. These are examples of those first impressions. These are examples of those negative impressions and their influence. What you're looking at now are also some examples, because there are many. Because when we say implicit biases, it's really the big umbrella of all these different behavior and social biases that play a role in our day-to-day interactions. Our question here is, are there common claims about employees, community members, students, maybe your own family members, that you suspect are underinformed by these biases? I know the writing is small, and we can offer that on a closer look, so you can look at these biases. But we just wanted a postie so that folks can understand that there are many social and behavioral biases that guide our decisions every day, and it's so vital as leaders and educators and members of the community to be aware of these because they play such a pivotal role in the decisions that we make. So how can we reduce our implicit associations? Next slide. First note, that we can start recognizing the moments in which we are most likely to make decisions, that, to make decisions that make, we, excuse me, we are most likely to make biased decisions when these factors are in place. The first one is vagueness. When you don't have enough information, the likelihood of biased actions being in place is pretty good. The next one is cognitive overload. This includes mental fatigue, lack of sleep, hunger, and other distractions. The third one is time constraints, when you're working under time pressures and rushing. And the last one, where biased decisions may be impacted by behavior, is overconfidence, when you're too confident to consider the opinions of others to make objective decisions. Now, what can we do? I'm just offering just a few because we are limited in time. But these are just a few things that we can do to reduce our implicit associations because they will never really go away. They're part of our brain mechanisms to check and to look out the window and to see how everybody's doing and to also safeguard ourselves. But consider taking the implicit bias association test. It comes from Harvard and universities, UVA, who have collaborated. And this is a free online resource that evaluates associations you have between concepts, evaluations, and stereotypes. You take it, it's not broadcasted, it's just to give you information. Before taking it, though, I do recommend reviewing a document called Making the Sense of Your IAT Results. This document from the Corwin Institute for the Study of Race and Ethnicity provides a research-based topology of some common reactions to the AITA1. Knowing our difference is so vital because all of us are different. Acknowledging differences consciously slows down the processes of priming, associations, and assumptions. Our brains are malleable, and we could build synopses to become more inclusive and equitable in all that we do in our practices. But guess, this requires intent. It requires lots of intent to reduce negative biases associated with our differences. The last one is seek friendships from people from different groups. Why do we want to do that? We do it because we want to increase our brains' familiarity to expand your point of view. This also creates safety associations in the brain and builds a counter narrative to influence new mental associations that are more positive and more in line with who we are. The last one's a mindfulness protocol, is a process of checking your implicit biases, and it's really four steps that it comes with. The first one is to evaluate your own assumptions, prejudices, and biases that you may have about people, about culture, about disability. You must first consider how your interactions, how you interact, and your expectations with those that you interact with. The second one is describe. Describe behaviors without interpretation to consider appropriate and consistent ways that you may want to respond. The third one is consider the many ways that people demonstrate engagement and how culture influences the way that folks respond and interact with each other in their workplace, community, and learning. And of course, the other is interpret behaviors to support rather than to inhibit relationships. Here are some more books if you want to look more into the subject matter. And also, the National Equity Institute is also a great site to visit for information on this topic. Next slide. Once again, unconscious training is a forward direction for organizations who are seeking to positively influence the workplace climate, productivity, and decisions. Next click. Gracias por su tiempo y atención esta noche. Thank you very much for the time.
I was just going to say thank you very much for that interesting presentation. I'm always glad to take a look at myself and think about all my implicit biases, one way or another. So with that, anyone have any questions, comments, thoughts? Supervisor Angry, your light is lit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just really a comment. I'm not new to this, okay? Military, we do this training all the time. I mean, if you want to see an organization that is successful in creating unity and, I mean, don't get me wrong, we have our issues on the side, but the main focus of it all, this is how we do it. You have to come into contact with those things that you know you're uncomfortable with, or you know what you're unconscious about, and you deal with them. You know, we always say, check your feelings and your emotions at the door. When you come together in a group, we need to function as a group. And that's, you know, what I see here. And every time we do this, and this is what, our third time doing this jointly together? Second or third? You know, this, to me, is a good step in the right direction for us. Because I've been saying this since I've been on the board, that we should have more of these meetings. But this isn't even just about us. This helps us in our communities, in our districts, you know, and everything that we do, because you have to be, you know, pretty much in tune with who you are and what you deal with in your head, in your own head. So, you know, thank you for this training. That was a really good presentation, so I appreciate that, and thank you for your time, and, you know, just thanks.
Supervisor Bodie.
Polly Jesse. Could I see the slide with the different biases, bandwagon effect, ostrich in group? Could you show that slide again, Maria?
I don't have the slide deck.
Oh, there it is.
There you go.
Okay. I found this to be a fascinating slide, especially when it comes to us as elected officials. We are elected officials, and I think we need to look at, some of us represent African-American groups and minority groups, some of us represent more middle-class groups. And when the ostrich effect, when I looked at that one, I thought, the tendency to ignore dangerous or risky situation for something else less likely to trigger our discomfort. Boundaries is one thing that we deal with, and racial issues are another thing, that is another thing. And you're always teetering back and forth with your own beliefs and the beliefs of your constituents. And you're trying to please your constituents, but at the same time, you're looking at this line that you cannot cross because of your own belief. And I just think that's a very interesting slide when it comes to us as leaders. We are leaders of a minority majority. I am in the Lakewood-Aqua Quan district, and Dr. Torian, who kind of convinced me to run for this office, said, always remember your district. But then I had to also realize that the bigger picture is all of the districts, that I represent all of these people. And when I was thinking about the scholarships and for daycare, my first tendency, my first reaction was, did they get the information? Did they feel comfortable coming in? Do we need, do we need to do more with that population? When I ran for the board, I said I was going to be a voice for the voiceless, kind of casually. And now that I've been on the board, I realize it's a very serious situation that we're dealing with. And also the bandwagon, you know, it's just easy to be on the bandwagon. And my bias was when we started dealing with the gay community. And I grew up in the South, and I grew up in a family that it was something that we thought was, to be honest, we laughed at people who didn't act like us. And it was my kids who are, were high school, high schools at the time, that I realized that they didn't grow up in that environment, they didn't have those feelings. So I guess I'm here to say that all of us have biases, and I'm really sorry that people felt that this was something to attack them personally. But I think that all of us need to realize, when you look at those slides, all of us have biases. And I think you did a wonderful presentation, and you look like a professor. So thank you, you did a great job. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. And just to note, biases can also be very favorable and positive. Like, if you ask me, who's one of the most intelligent girls in the world? I would say my girl. So they do have a way of influencing positively as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bodie, you have a comment?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burgos, for the informative and very comprehensive presentation. I want to take a note from Supervisor Angry's book for a moment and say, leadership comes from the top, tone tones from the top. We are the elected leaders of this county, and, you know, we run the most, the largest employers in the county. To me, how can we say that we want our business community, our communities that we serve and represent, to be inclusive, forward-looking, and embrace the diversity we have unless we ourselves are willing to take a look at ourselves and see how we're being inclusive? So I, again, always welcome the opportunity to have conversations like this, to look at ourselves in a very honest and holistic way, because, let's face it, we have the most diverse community in the Commonwealth. That means that our workforce, from both the county side and the school board side, is probably also one of the most diverse we have, and we can still do a lot more things and improve that diversity as well. But until we are able to say that, we want to acknowledge that we have these biases, good, bad, ugly, neutral, and that we want to do better by that, how can we expect our workforce to want to do something like that? How can we expect the business community to want to do that? How can we expect the people that we seek to thrive in our community to want to do better unless we want to do better? So I just wanted to say that, and I just wanted, again, highlight that the tone that we set matters, and I just want everyone who's in the room right now to remember who's in the room and who left the room. Thank you.
Supervisor Bailey.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say three things. One is, I want to say thank you to Maria Burgos. You've been on the battlefield for us for a very long time. It's great to see you continue on the battlefield for your community. You're doing an outstanding job. And I want to say thank you to, to the School Board for having the courage to present this. That's key. Want to say thank you to Dr. Waltz. Dr. Waltz, we've had some great conversations. One of the conversations, I don't know if you remember or not, is when you stop learning, you stop growing. And so courage to do this, hats off to you. I want to say to the reporters that are in the room, because I know you're here, I can feel you on my back, report the good news. It's easy to report the bad news, but report the good news. The good news is that two boards in this county got together, and we talked about diversity and inclusion, to move our county forward, identifying the cultures, and having respect for the cultures that are in our community. So report that along with all the negative stuff that you're going to report, because I think that's important for our community to hear. And then lastly, I am, I sent a text to my son, but I thought about it because I said, man, I'm ashamed right now. But I'm not ashamed, because Supervisor Angry, you said something very clear. If we are leaders, we got to feel the fear and do it anyway to be successful. We're going to be criticized, we're going to argue, we're going to say some things that's going to be offensive. But if we are truly leaders and devoted to this community, we have to feel the fear and do it anyway. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to Mr. Chairman. I know I've gotten on your nerves, you're my friend, I don't care. But you are a great leader, I know. You're a great leader, and you are a fearless leader for allowing us to be in this community of leaders, to have this training, not training, information. Thank you.
So upcoming next, we have the smart beginnings. Oh, I didn't see your light. Is there? Oh, okay. Got to go, I'm a light person. No, no, please.
I just wanted to take a second. I think it is important to take a look at ourselves and improve, and learn and grow, and keep an open mind and set the tone as leaders. I do think, however, we should be sensitive to the complaints that were made earlier because, you know, that the complaint was that, you know, this isn't the right venue, or that they didn't have really knowledge about this beforehand. It is a mistake to not be transparent about, you know, what's coming up in a meeting. And I agree, the information was really pretty late in coming. The materials were late in getting The materials were late in getting posted, and then we've had some, you know, discussion, or I guess back and forth about, was this training, or was this a presentation, and what was it? And that kind of like, one of those points in the slide was vagueness, and how that can lead to bias. And I think we saw a good example of that tonight, where there was just kind of some vagueness, and it led to kind of this sense of misunderstanding, and perhaps understanding, depending on your viewpoint, because words matter. You know, we have to be precise, and is it a training, or is it a presentation? Is it information? Is it to help guide us? What exactly is it? And we should, we should be sensitive to those kinds of complaints and listen to people, because, you know, to be on the opposite side of the table, or the opposite side of an issue, you know, to express a minority opinion is pretty difficult, and it's hard to, you know, kind of feel misunderstood. I mean, I've been misunderstood a number of times, currently have a number of teachers who are misunderstanding me, continuing to misunderstand me, even though the more I say, you know, teachers are great, et cetera, I'm misunderstood, and it's a very painful place to be. So I think, you know, going forward, you know, we need to understand, this is just, I guess, my comment, that it's important that we respect one another on the Board of County Supervisors and the School Board. We're both separate government entities, and we have strengths and weaknesses, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't, we should listen to each other, and we should be sensitive to the fact that we are equally, you know, important government boards, and that we have, that we can listen to each other. And I think transparency and communication and precision of language will make a difference as we go forward.
Madam Chair. I would like to add something to this, because I can't walk away from tonight and leave this sense that the board supervised did not. If I recall, at the legislative breakfast, the issue of biased training came up, and there were questions about whether or not this was going to be done, and why are we doing it? I think what we have here is not a lack of transparency, because I think that Dr. Latif or someone...
Ms. Jessie, we can't hear you, you're muted.
We all knew it, and it was reinforced tonight. If you feel that this subject is gonna make you uncomfortable, I think that you can go behind closed doors and talk to the chair, and talk to Ms. Williams about it, and I think that's where we are. I want to also add that last year, Mrs. Williams and I were the two representatives on this board, where we had these meetings. And I, we, sometimes I think we felt that they were unproductive, but we really made, we talked about our agenda, and so I just don't want to walk away with anyone in this room thinking that members of this board cannot collaborate, because we have in the past, and I hope we continue in the future. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Franklin.
Sure. Ms. Wall, I actually want to thank you for your comments, and to let you know that I actually really appreciate the fact that you said that. And even more so, I appreciate the fact that you said that, and that you're still here. That means a great deal. I'm just gonna speak on behalf of everybody. The fact that you're willing to have that difficult of a discussion, and that you're willing to say, actually, I think a little bit differently on this, on these parts, but I'm still gonna stay here, listen to the information, make up my mind, however I make it up. But I just really appreciate the fact that you are still in this room and engaging on this topic, because you're absolutely right, being the minority on an issue can be very difficult. And Supervisor Bailey was talking about, or was talking about fear, and so a lot of that comes with that, but the fact that, you know, you said that, you're still here, you're still facing the issue, I really, really respect that, and I'm not just blowing smoke, I want you to know that. So thank you.
Madam Chair. Thank you. I want to piggyback off what Supervisor Franklin said. I was just over here thinking, I really appreciate what you said, Ms. Wall. I think it matters, and it makes a difference. I can speak for being a member of a minority group and having to be the one to have to say things, and it is a very difficult position to be in. So I really do appreciate that. Moving forward from that point, I do want to specifically make note that we did discuss this in our last joint board meeting, that it was going to be on the agenda, and at the time, I personally offered for Supervisor Canlin, anybody else who wanted to know a little bit more about what I had in mind, to speak with them, and I did not get taken up on that offer, and the offer still stands. I mean, this board has done, along with the Board of County Supervisors, spectacular work. We have had eight zero votes on both boards. We have proven to our community that we can work together, and I hope that we can continue to work together. For me, personally, I asked for this training, I asked for this information session. What I originally asked for was actually a training, a year ago, when both boards were first elected, and reconsidered that, because we're not all in a place where we can receive training if we don't understand the topic at hand, and thought it would behoove us to really just start on the same page and really understand what biases are, because I think there's a lot of misconception about biases. Most people generally hear the word implicit bias and think automatically it deals with race. And as we learned tonight, it deals with all of our isms. It deals with both positive and negative associations. I cannot thank Ms. Burgos enough for the presentation that she made this evening, for the time and energy that you spent on it, Ms. Burgos, and the way that you really took the reins and demonstrated and taught all of us that implicit bias doesn't just deal with race issues. It deals with all of our isms. It deals with just the fact that we are all humans and we all have them. And you connected that to within the framework, that it's important to us as leaders, and who, people who run organizations. Ms. Supervisor Bodie mentioned that, you know, the school board is, the school division is the largest employer in the county, and both boards are responsible for the most diverse county in the state of Virginia. That, that's amazing, and it's a lot of responsibility to, for myself personally, I'm not familiar with every single individual culture that exists within Prince William County, or every language, or every individual. And working on my biases, both positive and negative, is a full-time job for me, something that I enjoy doing, and I pride myself on continuing to work on, because it's not a perfect thing. It is a continual lifelong process. And I really just want to appreciate, I just want to, really want to say that I appreciate you saying that, and that you talked about the negative and the positive, because the positive is also left out. So, and I want to say thank you to everyone who did remain in the room. I'm a lifelong learner, and I appreciate sharing that common characteristic with the people, individuals who did stay. And I think it speaks volumes to our constituent base, that we are all elected leaders, and that we're willing to continue to grow, because that's part of leadership. So thank you very much. I hope that each and every one of you will do some further study on your own, but that is completely up to you. And for the individuals who did not stay, I respect your decision not to. We all can't agree on the same things, but I hope that you will take the opportunity to learn some little bit of information about what you missed out on tonight on your own. And my offer still stands, if anyone would like to have a continued conversation after this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Wall, I'd like to say, I appreciate your comments. We all have differences of opinions. Those opinions, I believe, in my opinion, need to be expressed with respect, and quietly, and with some ability to discuss things. I don't think it needs to be loud, or rude, or grandstanding, and that's really what I take object to. And we all have differences of opinions, and we can't get through that. We need to talk about it calmly, distinctly, and, and not make a show of it. So with that, we'll move on and go on to Smart Beginnings Pre-K Program. Our last item on the agenda this evening is a brief presentation from Tanya Soltis on the Smart Beginnings Pre-K Program. Ms. Soltis served 37 years in education before retiring from Prince William County Schools in 2017. She participates in the Retirement Opportunity Program, working for the Central Elementary Schools Associate, as well as in the offices of Student and Professional Learning as a mentor and advisory. Since 2019, Tanya has held the position of Part-Time Executive Director of Smart Beginnings Greater Prince William, a program managed under Spark PWCS Education Foundation that advocates for growth and development of the children, birth through five, leading to a successful start to school and eventually the workforce. And welcome, Ms. Soltis.
Thank you, Chair Wheeler and supervisors, as Chair Latif and school board members and other members tonight. I appreciate the time that you're giving us. I'm gonna end, since I'm at the end, but with the beginning. And I am gonna talk about what happens with children from birth to age five. As a retired principal myself for 18 years, it was certainly a pleasure to receive the gift of five-year-olds in this school setting. At the same time, I could understand what happened prior to our having the privilege of receiving those children as students. I'm representing 20 board members in Greater Prince William. We serve Manassas City, Manassas Park, and Prince William County Schools in the region, and our board, we met today, and they send their thank yous, but at the same time, given the opportunity to present tonight, to share with you about our organization, and the fact that we continue to represent the voices of those who can't talk yet, and those who begin to talk. So with the next slide, I'd like to share with you the vision and mission. Thank you, Jason. And that is, when I think about the voices of those who are first born, I want to remind, I want to say to you that from early talk matters research, the achievement gap begins at birth. It's up to what happens to children after birth, before they get to kindergarten, that really does attribute to their development and growth. And the brain, we know, from birth to age three, is the most rapid time that the brain is growing, and that there are a million neurons and connections per second. That interactive talk is one of the strongest predictors of brain development, as it builds vocabulary. Vocabulary drives language and reading skills, and even as early as age three, and the predictor to age nine and 10. In fact, there's a lot of research of the gap between the wealthiest, and then those that I call economically challenged, and the amount of word gapping that happens because they don't have that opportunity. So 90% of the brain is developed by age five, and our brains are shaped by our experiences. So we know that ill-prepared, early yields, probably ill-prepared when we're older. When we think about kindergarten readiness, one of what our organization stands for was three different pillars. One is parent engagement, one is professional development for childcare directors and family day home directors, and literacy workshops on reading literacy. When we, you know, I'm not going to remind you of the statistics in Prince William County Schools as to the kindergarten readiness, from the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program. We look at the data, of course, from last fall, to be more traditional in its sense, because that was the beginning of a school year that we certainly were expecting it to be. But that 56% of the kindergartners were overall rated as ready, based on the four subtests that are given in literacy, pre-math, rereading, social skills, and self-regulation. And when we think also the student groups of our English language learners, 36% of those were, they have to pass all four of the subtests to be considered proficient, though those are the numbers, that they might have just missed one of the subtests in terms of benchmark. Students with disability, only 38% were considered ready, and economically challenged, 43%. So when we look at Virginia Department of Education, and they describe for us what makes a ready child, what makes a ready family, what makes a ready school, and what makes a ready community, and that's why we appreciate the time that you're giving us tonight, which of course is building collaborative partnerships. Convening area of resources also is the, tonight's presentation, and we're very grateful we've had the opportunity to speak with some of you individually, and yet also collectively. Next slide, please. So this is just a graphic of partnerships that we have across Prince William County. We are the only organization that's solely dedicated to birth to five in Prince William, where it's solely donor-funded, or grant applications, but we do look at Virginia Early Childhood Foundation. They had begun their 17 Smart Beginnings across the Commonwealth of Virginia, and Virginia Early Childhood Foundation, VECF, is a guidepost for us, and they did give monies to support the organization back in 2014, with the understanding that the county would, or the organization Smart Beginnings, would continue to grow physically, as well as physically, which we certainly know has happened in Prince William County for sure. Another organization that we collaborate with is the, with whom we collaborate, is the hospitals, the three-area hospitals, Haymarket, Novant, and also Centara. I can say that every child born in Prince William County Hospital is given a literacy kit from Smart Beginnings, that consists of their first book, a milestone, developmental milestones of what happens with a typical child from birth to five, a wheel, some bookmarks on why and how to read to your child, and with the expectation of reading 1,000 books before kindergarten, even if it's the same book, it still counts, the more that you can read to your child every day. Even now, when, when we're in this notion of not being able to provide in the volunteer time with the parents, we, the nursing staff thankfully has worked with us and are distributing our, the 49 volunteers that we have in our organization are very proud too, to be able to support our local libraries. Virginia Quality is a licensed daycare, like a rating system, similar to like a hotel five-star, that comes out of VDOE and VECF, and that was the future of licensed daycares being rated like that, and that's also on their website, so that more are looking towards growing, and that's how our childcare, daycare directors and what we are able to provide for them. Next slide. Yes, so you see, that's blank. It's blank because I want to take you back. Whoops, okay, well, that's all right. You gave a little bit away, Jason, but that's fine. So I want to take you to last February. We were planning an event that was to be held March 21st, 2020. Some of you were already registered for it. It was a workforce development breakfast, and we were very excited. We had First Lady Northam all set to be a guest speaker, along with other leaders in early childhood. And we knew that Secretary Atif Carney, Virginia Department Secretary, was unable to be there because of a conflict that he had, so he met with our executive board last February 1st, and we began to talk about barriers and some obstacles that we were facing as an organization. And so he gave us some ideas, that we were really looking for a coordinated effort for one-stop repository, or a sense of, that parents could come to, and then we could root them to different area organizations that could be helpful for them. And then March 13th, of course, happened, and so you can go ahead and click now, Jason, and that is the COVID-19 and the pandemic, and what has happened since then. So if you'll look, I would like to remind you, if you can click, that there are 38,000 when we first, when we pulled this data down in July. Now we know children have been born since then, and we also know that some children have aged out to six. But wanting you to know that this is who you represent, that this is about 7% of the population, so it's a very considerable amount, whose voice I'm here tonight to share with you. Thank you. The next click. These are some of the statistics that you are very much aware of, that before the pandemic, 60% of the birth-to-five-year-olds were already enrolled in our 372 licensed childcare centers. That should read July 2020. I'm sure you all picked up on that mistake there, I apologize. In July 2020, 60% of the childcare programs in Greater Prince William were closed, and we knew at that time, not all would be reopening. In October, many have been able to reopen, given the phasing in, and given some of the restriction lifting, but not all, any of them that we are aware of are fully enrolled, are fully enrolled to their capacity. And some of the reasons could be, parents not working outside the home now, doing teleworking, maybe physical distancing, the space of that childcare center, could be the parents' limited confidence in the health and safety and measures in their daycare, or childcare, or family home. Also, financial burden economically, and you talked a little bit about that, as you gave money to Alphabet and scholarships to help, and also staffing shortages. We knew before COVID that that preschool, or, you know, birth-to-five, is very difficult to have for staffing purposes. And the impact is, you are very well aware, and these daycare centers and the family daycares, they are small businesses, and many of them are, majority of them are owned by women. And so as we have our daycare director forums, and we connect and network with them, we hope that we continue to support. hope that we continue to support their needs. And that led us to the cross-sector leadership action. And we're certainly glad to be able to have the time with you tonight to remind you that we did have a legislative summit as a result of Secretary Carney's invitation. And we had state and local officials, government officers, and the three school division superintendents, higher education from Northern Virginia Community College and George Mason and health agencies as well as businesses, as Supervisor Bodie reminded us of the many businesses in our, in Prince William County. The First Lady was able to speak at that legislative summit. That was in September. And Jenna Conway gave us a lot of great statistics as the chief readiness officer. And the purpose for that summit was to raise awareness for the need for a birth-to-five agency in Prince William County. Next slide. So we also, in raising awareness, I would like to let you know as we look at surrounding jurisdictions, you can click, please. Thank you. The surrounding jurisdictions, you can see Fairfax, Alexandria, and Arlington each have something devoted for birth-to-five families and the children that they serve. In Prince William County, click, please. You can see there is no government-funded system in place. And we are the only organization dedicated, as I said before, and that we are donor-funded and volunteer. So what we are looking at, of course, is the financial resources that are needed to be able to support these families. Thank you. Next slide. Click, please. Okay, so in the, at the summit, there were actually forty-four people of the sixty-six were able to be there. So we broke out into three breakout sessions with Prince William, with Manassas City and Manassas Park, and we posed three questions for them. One of which was, what should be there are those who attended, the role in supporting the services and programs for this constituency? And you can click, please. And this is just to compile, I compiled a frequency of responses. And eight responses had to do with funding. Click, please. And you can see seven, the next three highest were about awareness, childcare challenges, early childhood services. Click, please. And those are highlighted because we were very much affirmed that those were our mission statements for for Smart Beginnings. And click again. And these were the remaining ones, that what should the role be of everyone who was attending there, special education, early identification, mixed delivery, which is an application grant, and COVID nineteen impact. Thank you. The second question, next slide. The second question was, what additional resources could be put toward that? And click, please. Number one answer was partnerships, which again, we were affirmed because, click, please. You can tell my pattern that that is the mission statement. So it was really great to align that with what we're about. Click, please. And the other additional resources are there too, which are looking at our three-year-olds, looking at what First Lady Northam and Governor Northam are looking at too for preschool universal that Richmond is now having for all four-year-olds, looking at funding, preschool screenings, trying to get the best services for our children at the earliest time because we know that's what makes a difference. Next slide. Click again. And the last question that we posed was, how can Smart Beginnings assist everyone, the stakeholders there in supporting young children? And you can see the most, again, we were excited because that did go along with our agency and people don't even, didn't even know we existed, some of the people around there. The next click. And the next click. Okay. And then those were the other, and you can see that the presentation for tonight came out of that summit. I would like to then say to you, that was September seventeenth. And then from September seventeenth to November sixteenth, we had a second summit. So the first summit, legislative summit, the purpose of that was raising awareness. The second summit was really, okay, we've talked about the why and the what, and now we have to talk about the how. And so if you'll click on the next slide. One of the biggest factor is a regional agency. And we were so excited at the second summit to have former Secretary of Education under Governor Wilder, Dr. Jim Dyke presented. He's on the back to work of Virginia Task Force, a powerful advocate. And he has expectations, of course, for the health and income and beginnings with early childhood. So I'd like to leave you with the thought of, you know, we do have a lot of support from Richmond, however, and and everyone around this screen and those of you who are in person, you know, I don't doubt any of you have the best intentions in knowing that it really does start at the very beginning of life and 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 we can make those changes. And so what we're trying to provide is being able to be a solution seeker. You know, we do have a problem and we know that. A lot of people are competing for your funding and looking at what we're going to be able to provide. But we would like to think about the high-quality health services, high-quality early learning, whether it's public or private school, to equalize and to have accessibility and access for all of our families. And they deserve that, as you know. And we are grateful for your leadership in representing each of your constituencies and thinking about the youngest children that are being raised to maybe sit in seats like yours as they get older. And that I'll leave you with, you know, looking at Florida County Supervisor's vision that we want Prince William wants to be a community of choice, a choice to live in, a choice to work in, and a choice that we really need to care for our youngest children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Soltis. That was an excellent presentation. Just want to add on here, I'm going to ask Dr. Walts to comment. And and I know many of you have heard me say this, and I've said this publicly. You know, since Dr. Walts has been superintendent of the school division, our graduation rate has continued to rise almost every year. And he's the one who brought full-day kindergarten. He's also brought some pre-K programs. And Dr. Walts, can you just comment to the success of the full-day kindergarten as you view it and as the current programs we have with the pre-K that I know the county did help with some of that funding and and we get state matching funds? But can you comment to that?
Yes, thank you Chairman Latif and members of both boards. Good evening once again. Very excited about the advancements that we've made with our our young learners. And as Chairman Latif mentioned, in my second year, which was fifteen and a half years ago, we implemented full-day kindergarten across our entire school division. As he mentioned, the the effects of that, one of the beauties of being here for quite a long time, our daughter Delaney was two when we moved here, and she's a senior at Colgan this year. But to be able to see the data over time of things that get implemented. And one of the things that Chairman Latif mentioned is that our graduation rate has actually increased every year since the federal government and state began measuring the on-time graduation rate in two thousand and eight. And certainly, our success is a credit to every one of those kindergarten teachers because we were able to double the instructional time. There's so much data available on how much learning takes place. It's Ms. Soltis, and thank you again, Ms. Soltis, for sharing your time with us this evening. And and we work closely together over the years. But the data that's available on just how much learning takes place in those very early years, and it's really our chance to make huge gains at a very young age. Those gains also have a cost savings. There have been studies that have quantified that. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but certainly, there's a lot of data that shows that the earlier you intervene with the child's positive educational experience, if you are students that go into special education or have additional needs. Also, if you have second language learners and you're able to get them in school earlier, they are like a sponge with a language. And the earlier you start working with children in a, in whatever language you're, you want to refer to, they just learn it at an incredible speed. So there's lots of value to this. And we've had a great partnership over the years with county government and the fact that the state gives us some assistance with pre-K. And we've been expanding those programs little by little over the years in spite of a ten-year Great Recession. And this year, you were able to help us a little bit more. And we were able to add a number of new additional pre-K classes. The need is still great out there, and we appreciate this partnership between our county government, the state, and, you know, your local support is very much appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Walts.
I could add to Dr. Walts, if you'd like to know. It's for what Dr. Heckman, who is a Nobel economist, says for every one dollar, you get a thirteen-dollar return.
That's exactly right. I think, I think that's the highest return on investment in education is when you do it at the early age, right? Ms. Wheeler, I know you were at one of the legislative, the summit and and participated in that. If you wanted to give us your thoughts, I know you had some.
Well, you know, one of the things, it was pointed out is that we don't have an office of early childhood education in in Prince William County, or the Greater Prince William area, because that also really is Manassas, the city of Manassas and Manassas Park. And, you know, we can talk about equity among our our children across the entire county and and do nothing about it. But if we want to start making real strides, we need to start making sure that everyone has access to early education. And we've made, I know the school systems have made some strides that in that. But I think it was Secretary Carney who was talking about, you know, they really were looking at us and and saying, either in partnership with the school system or the county doing it separately, you know, can we establish an office of early education for our schoolchildren? Because as as great as our school system is, and I love our school system, we do have disparities across the county in these, I mean, it's it's those zero to five years. And if we're going to invest in it, we need to start investing in it now. And so actually, one of my questions to Ms. Soltis is, what are the next steps? What are are people envisioning? What are they, you know, what is the state giving any support? Is there any, you know, what are some of the next steps that we could do?
Well, what we're trying to propose is that it would be a government-funded agency, Chair Wheeler and and everyone else who is here. There is no state monies that we're aware of that will be there to support us, that it would be local expected, expected monies. We have drawn up some proposals, you know, of what the staffing would look like based on our benchmarking surrounding areas and what we see as needs in Prince William, being that we're so large and being able to meet the diverse population that we have. So we have some great ideas and and a proposal, but we just need to talk with someone, you know, or some people who could help support that financially.
Mr. Wilk had his hand up, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Soltis, Superintendent Walts, Dr. Walts. I am proud to work with the superintendent, Ms. Soltis, and the board in previous years as we expanded pre-K classrooms for the eastern end of the county hosted within our very own Potomac District. For the supervisors who do not know the district, like Ms. Supervisor Bailey and myself, if you go back home on two thirty-four, head west, you'll see Patty Elementary on the right side of the road. You'll see Washington Reed on the left side of the road. Washington Reed was originally a K-two building the last couple of years. And I want to thank the county and the CIP and my former predecessor, Ms. Betty Covington, for the renovations that occurred and the addition that came on Patty, which allowed Patty to become a consolidated K-five building. And then we had all those additional recently renovated classrooms on that side of the road. So with the help of the B O C S and our school division, we were able to make Washington Reed a full pre-K center and expand those opportunities and bring more kids back to school. As we keep on saying, there is no better indicator to success than identifying these kids early and bringing them into the school. And that makes me even prouder that as a school division, during the pandemic, we have led the way in Northern Virginia of bringing in our pre-K, our kindergartners, our first graders, our special needs students before any other division in this area. Now, the studies are showing, and we're seeing all over different jurisdictions highlighting major achievement gaps that we're seeing all across the board with our students. And as the pandemic continues, I feel we're going to continue seeing these gaps as we navigate through this. And, you know, what I fear is, is we're seeing all this research and the importance of bringing kids back into school, that, you know, we're not going to catch up on many of these kids. These gaps are going to persist, and we're going to see these effects many, many years down the road. So I have to think, and I sit to myself about what about these students who have not been identified yet? Like my own son was early on and actually had the benefit of having Ms. Soltis as his principal in the Child Fine Program at Montclair Elementary. What about the kids with literacy issues, dyslexia, rising number of students like that? Or what are we going to see with our PALS scores with other literacy issues from last year to this year as a result of the pandemic? What about our youngest students who are right now trapped in learning environments where they have no books, no supplies, or educational resources at home? And then, of course, what about our pre-K kids? You know, we are bringing them back. We are phasing into the hybrid plan, which we are doing. And we're seeing the benefits, I believe, of this in-person and learning. And so like Dr. Walts, I do want to thank you. Dr. Latif mentioned the full-day kindergarten, that you had foresight many, many years ago to bring that, to work with the division, to expand pre-K. You know, I do want to thank, it's ironic, I actually talked to Secretary Carney for the first time in five months on the way over here. And he was talking about the importance of making that agency in Prince William County, depending on what the budget happens in the future. And then, of course, Ms. Soltis, I love you to death. You're amazing. You are an outstanding principal. Like Ms. Jessie says, once you're a principal, you're always a principal. So I think of you as the principal of Montclair Elementary. You were a true treasure to that community. And I thank you for everything that you're doing. And it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you.
Ms., hold on, Ms. Jessie, Ms. Williams had her hand up.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I I am so proud of the work that Prince William County Schools has done with our early childhood education programs and our expansion of pre-K. I I know that we'll see some gaps continue and expand because of this pandemic. And even before the pandemic hit, I know this is a subject matter that's near and dear to several of our board members' hearts. I know Ms. Jessie has has done a lot of work on this as well. I just want to remind our audience and our and our constituents that we do think about those who are deemed middle-class by the those lovely income brackets and still can't afford to put their children in preschool. Those are two-parent working households. I know because I was one of those at one time with my oldest son. And then again, as a single-income household that met all the income requirements, but pre-K is expensive. And and on top of that, not only do you pay for pre-K, but you also compound it because you have to pay for daycare on top of that. And then all of the supplies and the materials and the time and effort to get your child to these educational programs that we know, we have historical data on, that says it is the best bang for our buck and the best outcome for all of us in society and in the long run. So I would be excited and very interested in supporting or working towards that development of an early childhood education center for our entire county. I can't speak for our school division. I can speak for myself personally, and I can, I know I can speak for all of those families who are in the middle class or the lower-middle class or anyone over that four or five hundred percent of the poverty indicator, because that's really what you have to be, is at four or five hundred percent below poverty level to get participation. And I know in our county, we still have wait lists for those seats for our students. So I think that this is a topic that really truly affects all of us, whether it's us parents in the beginning or us as adults in the long run in functioning society with these individuals who haven't had the same opportunity that certain members of our society have just by simply because of the nature of the income, their parents being able to afford it, or they were one of the blessed individuals who were able to take part in in a program and granted that waiver, that seat. So I think this is a fantastic opportunity for us to look forward to working on in the future. And hopefully, we can get some funding for the state later on. So thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
Hi, I just wanted to say that I've been on the Policy Council for Head Start and Preschool for the last seven years. And tremendous work is being done. And on a monthly basis, these parents show up. And those of you who are on the screen, and there are many of you who are principals and who were principals or are principals, and you know how difficult it is to get parents to show up for parent advisory council. I walked into those meetings and the room is full. So they're doing a wonderful job with the Policy Council and with Head Start. When I came to the county, my background is in speech pathology and and ideology, but language development is so very, very important. I know the importance of preschool. So Tanya, I'm very pleased with the work that you've done. And, you know, you say, once a principal, always a principal, once a parent, always a principal. So I want to share this little photo. I don't know if you can see it. And this is little Jessica Jessie at age seven months. And she's holding her book. Yes, it is Good Night Moon. And the importance of literacy, you know, because I knew the importance of reading to her and I realized importance of reading to her, and I realized with both my babies, and there is a reading voice, there is a speaking voice, and babies recognize it, and I know Tanya knows this also right away. I think getting that information out to parents, the educational aspect of it is important. And I guess I want to ask Tanya, are you guys, do you meet with members of the Head Start? Do you, have you made a connection? Do you have collaboration with that group also?
Yes, I could speak to, you know, the committees that we have, one of the school readiness committees, we do have Amanda Wilder, you know, from Prince William County Schools. We have Manassas City and Manassas Park Early Childhood are on and also on our board. So yes, we have that connection through what we do.
I think getting books and, you know, and do you provide books at the hospital when the parents, once they have their children, you get, they get that package?
Yes, and they have a choice of English or Spanish. We have all of our materials in one of those two languages.
I think it's so important. And to Dr. Walts, I was here when we had half-day kindergarten. I think it did a great for, great work, great amount of improvement for literacy, but for those of us who are principals, and I know Tanya, you were one of them.
I was one.
Riding that kindergarten bus, that half-day kindergarten thing was a mess, and I'm just glad that you were able to change that. It improved literacy, but it helped principals feel better too, because I'd really, not really, I had a good time on the bus with kindergartens because they told all the family's secrets. Thank you.
Jen Wall?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, as a humanities English major who loves books and is a member of two book clubs currently and holds two library cards, I think it's really important that we help all of our students have the kind of rich environment that they need as young children to be successful in school. I think that's to our advantage. I'm interested in the, I don't know much about Smart Beginnings, but I saw on one of your slides, it said donor-funded volunteer organization. So do you have any employees that are paid, or are you completely a volunteer organization? And then what kind of budget are we looking at to, like, what kind of operating budget do you have? I guess you don't really have a budget, but I guess you maybe do, I don't know. And then how many volunteers do you have right now? And if we were to take what you're doing now and like make it into a government agency, like what kind of size are we looking at? I don't know if that's even, I mean, I think that's, I'd like to know that, if we...
If I might just lead off by asking Ms. Goss to talk about what we have in place through the school division, and then what we have had in place in Great Beginnings and what we're hoping to achieve with consideration from the county. So if we could start with Ms. Goss, Associate Superintendent for Student Learning and Professional Development.
And on our Board of Directors as well.
Yes.
Yes, proud to serve on the board for Smart Beginnings. But underneath our Office of Student Learning, we also have the Office of Preschool Programs, and that office oversees our preschool programs for Head Start as well as our other preschoolers. They provide 360 degrees of support for our families. Our families get family services, health services, mental health support, and nutrition services, and so our students and families can take advantage of that support. You heard Mrs. Jessie speak about the Policy Council, which is an integral part of our Head Start program, and how we engage families in the decision-making and make them partners in the education of our earliest and youngest students in the district. And so certainly, literacy, but all of those skills that lead students to be able to participate and fully access school are a part of our preschool programming, and Smart Beginnings is a partner to that work, and certainly, we collaborate with them and Dr. Wilder, you know, collaborates with everyone in Prince William County, our other school divisions as well, who serve our youngest students, including our private partners, because it is a, it's a full-team approach here in Prince William County relative to getting our youngest students to be able to be successful when they arrive in our kindergarten classrooms. And so that preparation that happens in our preschool programming to get students used to books, but also really participating in school, enjoying school, loving learning, those social skills that are so important to their success, all of that takes place in our programs. And so that gives a kind of quick summary of what that Office of Preschool Programs does for our families and students who are able to take advantage of those opportunities. And I believe I answered all of the questions Dr. Walts put out there.
Dr. Walts, you mentioned also, so, in what I think we all want to hear too, as Chair Wheeler mentioned, next steps. And I know each year, if we invest in early childhood pre-K, there's matching dollars at the state, but we've never maximized that match. Is that correct?
You are absolutely correct. We send several million dollars back to the state.
And so one way to start or, you know, commit to this is to get the matching funds to increase the size of the pre-K programs we do currently. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then while working with Smart Beginnings to even further expand that is something that we've talked about now in the last few months as well. Is that correct?
That's correct. We've worked in partnership with Smart Beginnings since its inception, and I don't know, Ms. Soltis, if you want to add anything about the kind of leadership that we had there, and then we lost the funding for that, and again, maybe just to very briefly articulate what we're hoping to have the county to assist.
Sure. And to answer also what Ms. Wall was asking too, I am the only salaried person, I'm a part-time, I work about 20 hours a month, but that's what I bill, a contractual hourly contract, but I give much more to service. All others are volunteers. The amount of, we have a lot of in-kind services through Spark and through the Communications Department, as well as, as Dr. Walts has talked about, the leadership. So we are grateful for that in-kind as well as any monetary support, but we all, it's all donor-driven and by organizations, by communities, by grants that we apply for. And also, we get Manassas City and Manassas Park. I do want to answer Chair Wheeler, I failed to mention that, that they too are interested, and we are supposed to be setting up something with their mayors and their school boards to see whether this regional program that is already in place with a couple of different agencies that we might be able to model after. Model after? Model? Did I answer, Dr. Walts, what you were asking? And Chair Latif?
Yes, yes. So I want to...
Because, oh, one other thing, though, I should say, that we're also interested, remember this infant toddler, you know, that, yes, they're of school age when they, some of the children qualify at age three or three child fine, but we're also looking at advocating with our parents and knowing about that other development of that birth to age three.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to thank, I know Kenny Bodie had participated in some of these, this work and Chair Wheeler, and one of the thoughts to put this on our joint agenda was to just outline some of the needs in the community, and as we collectively think about how better to address these needs, this presentation was something to allow each of us to go back and think about what would benefit our district, our community, our county. And I think if you leave here remembering just one thing that Ms. Soltis said, is a $1 investment in early childhood education brings a $13 return on investment. And I think there's no better investment that our county can do, especially with the growth that we see in our county, the place where we are, and the reason for people wanting to come here. We do have great schools, and we'd all like to see them become greater. So with that, I'll turn it over back to Madam Chair, and if you want to conclude, we can...
Wrap it up, yeah, I guess we have to officially adjourn. Does anyone have any closing questions from Ms. Soltis at all? Any other further comments regarding schools? Supervisor Bailey?
I did want to say one more thing, I'm sorry, when I reflect a little bit. Chair Wheeler, when you ask about what the next steps are, we are in the process of actually doing our three-year strategic plan, so we are convening stakeholders as we speak to look at our 2124 strategic plan that we have that already in place too, to offer through this Office of Early Childhood.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bailey?
I think it's forthcoming, thank you, Madam Chair, but the question that I had was in terms of funding, with a program like this, what are we looking at in terms of funding overall? Is, I mean, is that a fair question? Because that is my burning question, Ms. Soltis.
Yes, money does burn one's pockets, I think, they say. Well, we're looking at able to phase in something. We were hoping to be able to start this office as early as January 1, but we know that's really not reasonable. So we would like to be able to start it as soon as possible, even though you already have your budget set for this fiscal year. So if we had something that we could at least upstart with an executive director who is working full-time, as well as perhaps another part-time person to get things together, to be able to propose to you in your next budget cycle, which I know is starting in January, so that we could then say, well, this is what our fully funded office would be, and we do have staffing roles and responsibilities that we feel would be beneficial to the office, like I said, as we benchmark others. So I failed to kind of say, I could say a range of salary, you know, of $40,000 to $60,000 for an interim kind of thing, and then to look toward a range, if we were looking at five staff members, which is what we were looking at, and be able to look at something, depending on who's hired and what kind of benefit package there would be, could be between $300,000, $450,000.
Thank you very much, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, but again, that's still negotiable, right?
Absolutely, but it's an idea.
Okay, I want to say thank you for having us out again. You know, it's been a difficult year, and I think that the strength of having the partnership between the two boards has really helped us get through this year successfully, albeit as successful as we can be during a pandemic, right? And no one's expecting perfection, I'm sure. So thank you for having us. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Bodie, seconded by Supervisor Bailey. We have to do our official meeting. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Madden, can you call the roll, please?
Supervisor Bodie?
Aye.
Supervisor Bailey?
Aye.
Supervisor Angry?
Aye.
Supervisor Canlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lawson?
Aye.
Supervisor Vega?
Aye.
Chair Wheeler?
Aye.
Vote unanimous?
And adjourns our meeting.